Praise the Lord, hallelujah. Hallelujah, glory be to Jesus. Amen. Are we ready? Praise the name of the Lord. Are we ready to go with God this evening?
Yes pastor.
Ready, okay.
Yes pastor.
Okay, and I want to hear one person.
Ready and willing pastor.
Are you ready?
Let's go.
Yes, pastor, ready to go.
Okay. Okay praise the Lord, well good sister. Burnett open us in what I pray this evening, praise the Lord. This is Madri.
Hello, yes. Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah. Father, we bless your name this evening. Father, we honor you this evening, we give you thanks oh God, Lord. We glorify oh God and magnify you oh God. Because you are the only true and living God. You are the one oh God, Lord. Who looks upon us oh God, Lord, with love. Oh God, Lord, with mercy, with grace, Father. And this evening, Lord, we are ever so thankful to come into your presence oh God, Lord. To hear from you, to hear from the Holy Spirit oh God. Hallelujah, Lord, we pray that your blessings would be upon us this evening. Through the blood of Jesus, we cover everything and everyone with the blood of Jesus. We pray that the Holy Spirit direct our pastor this evening. Even as he delivers your word oh God, Father, Lord. Give us clarity, Lord, and understanding oh God, Lord. Father, anoint him oh God, one more time, from the crown of his head to the soul of his feet.
Yes, Lord.
In the name of Jesus. Father, touch every person oh God, Lord. Who have made themselves available this evening oh God, Lord, to be on this platform. And their God, Lord, even as we go into your word, Father, Lord. At the end of it all, Lord, may we come out richer oh God, Lord.
Yes, Lord.
In spirit and grace oh God, and in everything. We commit everything to your hands oh God this evening. And we give you all the honor, we give you all the glory, and we give you all the praise oh God. For what you are going to do in our lives this evening. In Jesus' precious name, amen.
Amen, good, God bless you, good evening to the Bishop of the house. Dr. David and Swan Jackson and their family. Good evening to the leaders and elders of the. Cookie Open Bible Standard Church. Also to the San Juan Open Bible. Reconciliation Center Pastor Keith Pereira. They are also doing this Bible study along with us. And they are coming on for the first time this evening. And we are so happy to have all of you this evening. And we know God is going to bless us. Now the studies we have been doing. From the Book of Acts, and we will continue to do. Would not be just a simple Bible study. We'll be doing a lot of biblical exegesis. You know, looking into certain things in a more deeper analytical way. So we have a sense of, you know, what God is saying to us as individuals, as well as as a people, as a church. You know, last week, we looked at chapter one. And I wanted anyone can say to me. Who is the writer of the Book of Acts? Could anyone on mute your mic can tell me? Who is the writer of the Book of Acts? Anyone?
Luke.
Okay, Luke, what was his profession? What was his profession?
A doctor.
Beautiful, medical doctor, and also who was the recipient? Who, to whom did he write this book?
Theophilus.
Theophilus, and what was, what was Theophilus' status in society? What kind of work he did?
He's a Roman general.
Beautiful, women, we have, we have a Bible scholar, but a cocker boy, wow, wow. Okay, he is a Roman general, and then. We saw last week where, you know, there were two books that Luke wrote. One was asked, which was the other?
Gospel of Saint Luke.
Beautiful, excellent, you are very bright and sharp. See, he wrote the Gospel of Luke. And he also wrote the Book of Acts. Both books, so one person. And I wanted to just emphasize again today. We have learned a lot about the importance of the individual, especially during this past two years with the COVID. You know, the importance of the individual, because our churches have closed. And many of us had to operate just maybe through social media, telephone message. And the reality is, if you're on the telephone, you can't talk to two persons all at the same time. You let it probably pause, say, hold, I will call you back, I'm on another line. And when you're talking on the telephone, most times you're talking to us one person, isn't that so? Yes, one person, so we see two books that Dr. Luke wrote. Because he's teaching us the importance of the individual. And as we saw last week, one person. That is committed to the Lord and really surrendered to the Lord can really. Transform the entire world, as we will see in Bible history, how Paul the Apostle. As one person. And we'll see even in the life of Jesus, when Jesus impacted people. During his earthly ministry. Jesus understood and set the example for us, the importance of the individual. Maybe one person in your home. A husband, a wife, you know, a child, you know, maybe. A next door neighbor, one person on your job, Jesus spoke to the woman of the world alone. He spoke to Nicodemus alone. He spoke to Zacchaeus in Luke 19 alone. I get me. And all of these people he spoke to, when he was on the cross, he spoke to the thief on the cross. With just one man, you know, today thou shalt be with me. And Jesus Christ led our example, taught us, you know, the importance of the individual. Last week, we also said that. You know, in Luke's opening statement. He said that our lifestyle supposed to precede what aspect of our lives? Our lifestyle should precede what?
Our speech.
Our action.
Beautiful, that's right. Amen, when we live the life, somebody said, when we speak. You know, on our lifestyle, good, you know, our lifestyle supposed to precede lip service. You know, so what we say, you know, sometimes. You know. I am being a pastor for many years, I'm not training any pastors on the platform. So please pastors, do not crucify me. But I heard a story of a young man. Going up United States, he has strong, a strong ministerial family. And once in an interview, they asked this young man. Who is the most powerful preacher in his life? And he says, my mother. But they said, your mother never preached. You know, she's just like the pastor's wife with her children. And that young man said, you know, it's like, even though my father is a pastor. But my mother lived a Christian life. So it's amazing that what she, what the life is, mother lives in that home. Speaks volumes. You know, it is much more convincing than even his father, who is a preacher. And that, that is even for me too, as a pastor, so. I don't know if there may be pastors on the platform, but. You can, you can live a life in such a way, we call it lifestyle evangelism. Where our lives can impact people, because you know, the Bible says, we are living in peace, because we are being read of men 24/7. People watching us in every area of life, you know. So that in a workplace, in church, in a community, people are always watching us. And reading us, so it is important, we saw Jesus setting the example. Okay, we also saw last week quickly where. You know, when Jesus Christ spoke to them concerning the coming of the Holy Spirit. That these apostles, they ask a question, it says, Lord. Will thou at this time restore the kingdom of Israel? And Jesus Christ drew the attention. To something that was much more urgent. And he sends a strong sense of nationalism. They wanted to see the nation of Israel restored its former glory. That is yet to come, for those of us who understand, you know, prophetic scriptures. Israel will be restored its former glory. That will be way after the times of, you know, the Antichrist. Where God is going to restore, you see that again in Romans chapters nine, 10, and 11. You see chapter nine in Romans, where Israel as a nation was elected by God through Abraham. Then in chapter 10 of Romans, we see they actually, they rejected Jesus. But then eventually, we see in chapter 11, they will be restored. So as we know the Bible, we would see these things come in the past. So it's like Jesus in a very gentle, loving way says. It is enough for you to know the times and the seasons that the Father has, you know, placed in his own hands. You know, but I want you to carry in Jerusalem until you be in Judea power. Amen, then you shall be what? Witnesses. It's a beautiful word, the word is meritorious. And many times people misinterpret this. But this is the, this is the key verse of the Book of. The Book of Acts, as Revelation 1:19 is the key verse in Revelation. 1:8 is the key verse. Because it gives, this is like Jesus' mission statement for the two Samaritan churches. Take a whole weekend to go to leadership, to develop a mission statement. Jesus' mission statement, very simple and profound. He says, when the Holy Ghost comes, your ministry begins in Jerusalem. You see that in Acts chapter one, verses 1 to 7, I think I sent some information for you, for you to see these things. And then in chapters eight to 12, we see Acts in Judea and Samaria. And then from 13 to 28, we see to the uttermost parts of the earth. When we come to that part, we will see, you know, the missionary journeys of Paul the Apostle. He has three missionary journeys, and then his final journey to Rome. They spent time in prison, and they must finally be executed by Nero. So we're gonna look at all those things and do some expository studies as we go along. You know, so what Jesus wanted these men to know, these great apostolic leaders. You know, you need to understand that, you know, from an ethnic perspective. These men, they love their people, they love their race, you know, and sometimes in Christianity. That is what him does, he woke up God, because some people, you know, they just believe in their own ethnic group, their own race. And Jesus knew that within them, you know, and you'll see, when you read the Book of Galatians, you'll see even Paul the Apostle. Had to speak to Peter because of his own ethnic and his partial behavior. Towards Jews as against Gentiles, and he gave him a very gentle rebuke. And Jesus wanted his men to understand that God's redemptive plan was for all mankind. So that the only way that these men's perspective towards mankind will change is when the Holy Ghost comes. And brings that transformation to their lives. Until that time, I mean, right down to Jesus' ascension. They were thinking about seeing Israel restored to the former glory. And nothing is wrong with that, but Jesus is saying, that is yet futuristic. You know, and yes, there's a coming kingdom. But if people's lives are not transformed spiritually. The reality of seeing that next kingdom, you know, is very unlikely. Because if people die without Christ, you know, the end result is going to a crisis, it will be just hell. So Jesus wanted them to change their focus and recognize. That look, take your eyes off from this, you know. The glory of, you know, the coming glory of Israel. And look at God's bigger program, which is the salvation of mankind. Moses was in 2 Peter 3:9, that God is not willing that any should perish, but that all will come to repentance. So we see, you know, the promise of the Father was given by Jesus. Also to me, so. Where Jesus said, John truly baptize you, you know, in water, but. You know, I will baptize you to Holy Ghost and with power. Amen, and with fire. Let me, so also last week. In verses nine and 10. You know, and says here, when they had spoken these things. Why they be held in verse nine, he was taken up on a cloud, received him out of the sight. When we come to the Book of Revelation, you will see that same cloud. That, that is what is what we call a sheikhanal cloud. That is not as an ordinary cloud, that cloud is related to the great presence of God. You see it again in Isaiah chapter six, so these are things we need to know, this is not an ordinary rain cloud. This is a sheikhanal glory cloud that Jesus Christ went up into as he ascended back into heaven. All right, and then you also see here, and while they looked up in verse 10 steadfastly. Bible tells us, two men stood by them in white. Which also says, ye men of Galilee, why standing here gazing up into heaven? The same Jesus would have taken them from you into heaven. Shall so come in like manner as you have seen him go to heaven. This is amazing, you know, as Jesus has been ascended back into the presence of his heavenly Father. Where he would sit upon the throne, amen, as king of kings and lord of lords. The angel is actually given to us, you know, God's timetable in a sense. These angels are telling these disciples, Jesus Christ is coming again, amen. The same he left is coming again. And Bible tells us in from verse 12, right down to the ending of chapter one. They returned unto Jerusalem, from the mount of Olives, which is Jerusalem. A Sabbath day's journey, you know, last week, we touched on that. And we wanted to know, what is a Sabbath day's journey? And we said last week, Sabbath day's journey really is. 2,000 cubits. And sometimes people want to know, where did this 2,000 cubits idea come from? You, you go all Jewish scripture, and you may be looking. The Sabbath day's journey is 2,000 cubits. Now, cubit is one and a half feet, but is approximately 18 inches. Most of us, you know, our mathematics, you know, a mile is approximately 5,268 feet. So if a cubit is one and a half feet, and a Sabbath day's journey is 2,000 cubits. We're talking about approximately 3,000 feet. Which, if you look how the, the ratio there is about three fifths of a mile, or three quarter mile. All right, and which should be from, let's say, maybe for those in Cookie. From let's say, maybe from the Cookie Church. Where the Cookie Church is located. So about, let's say, maybe where the roundabout is, that will be about three quarter miles, all right? Where the, where the cookie is located, you come down Forest Road. And you drive down, when you reach the roundabout, that's about a three quarter mile. That's about 2,000 cubits. And we need to know these things when we read in the Bible. You go back to Joshua chapter 3, verse 4, and you would see when Joshua was crossing the Jordan with God's people. God wanted him make a distinction between, you know, look. Even though Joshua was the leader, it was God who was leading him into their promise. So God wanted them to take their eyes off of man and keep it on him. The ark of the covenant must be placed 2,000 cubits before the people. So the priests had the ark of the covenant lifted, read that in Joshua 3 and 4. That is the foundation script here for this 2,000 cubits. So when they would, when they reached the river Jordan. So I wanted to picture now the holiness of God. The priests would have the four priests holding the ark of the covenant on his poles. They are by the roundabout on the brink of Jordan. And the people, they are by Cookie Open Bible Church. So when they would look to the forefront, they wouldn't be seeing Joshua leading them into the promised land. God wanted to get all the glory, so he wanted them to know it is the ark of the covenant. That is leading the people into their promised inheritance. So once we get that, we get a message, so the, the rabbis and leaders of the Old Testament. They saw that as an indication that 2,000 cubits making that gap between the people. And the ark of the covenant, so when the ark of the covenant was now placed. In the tappanackle, in the wilderness, they develop all these laws concerning these restrictions that. You know, if the people leave their tents to come to the tappanackle in the wilderness. It must be approximately 2,000 cubits. And that was a standard measurement, where the tents will be located to the tappanackle. So the, the rabbi's developed that as a law. But you know, the reality is, even in the times of Jesus, you know, we see this in the Book of Acts. 2,000 cubits from where the mount of Olives, where Jesus ascended. Back to the upper room, it's 2,000 cubits. But most of the Jewish people, in the days of Jesus, did not keep this commandment. They broke it, because in reality, Jesus knew then that he could not keep these laws. So you may be wondering, where is Sabbath day's journey idea came from? That is where it came from in Book of Joshua, chapter 3. And verse 4. There's another scripture that you need to be aware of as well. You also need to look at. The Book of, I think it's Leviticus. You know, Numbers, no, not Leviticus, sorry, Numbers 35, verse 5, you will see. That same 1,000 cubits was a measurement given for the movements of the priests as well. So Joshua chapter 3, verse 4, and Numbers chapter 35, verse 5. So the Bible tells us, now they went back to the upper room last week, we saw that. And when they were coming in, they went up. I want somebody to answer me a question, and somebody must get a revelation. What, look what it says here. Verse 13, and when they will come in, they went up into an upper room. Who wants to tell me, based on the revelation God has given to you, why think that they went to an upper room? Anybody? Can I mute your mic and interact, praise the Lord? What, what, what that signifies to you as a believer? They didn't come back and just walk into a room. It is specifically an upper room. Anyone wants to share, because this is an interactive class, thank you. Anyone? Anyone wants? Hello? Is anyone out there?
Is it a room that would have been specifically set aside or apart for that purpose?
Yes, definitely, you are, you are so correct. And but the idea of an upper room, what comes to your mind, an upper room?
That it's upstairs, it's not down, it's not on the road level, it's up.
Beautiful.
A higher experience at something.
Yes, yes, you are correct, go ahead, they're getting revelation. Jesus Christ actually ordained it, that it wasn't just a room to walk in on ground level. The very idea of the upper room brings someone in, who does, who does give that answer? There's somebody flowing in revelation knowledge, who just answered that?
Christiana Joseph.
Christiana, wow, congratulations, amen. Jesus wanted them to recognize the experience that they were about to have. Would be something that would take them to a higher level, you are correct. So this upper room, amen, and in a, in a, in a symbolic format, it's like. Every one of us here should have an upper room, someplace where you know, when you shut over there, meet with God. Whenever you come out from that place, you would have had a fresh encounter with God, amen. So that was great sister Christiana, keep up the great, are you a Bible soon graduate?
No, Reverend Alexis.
You never thought about going to Bible school either?
I, I have thought about it.
Yeah, but you, 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 the Lord's going to tell you, you'll make an excellent teacher. Amen. And not to, I'm not to share with you, when you teach it, do you do any teaching?
Not in the church, no.
Okay, all right, praise the Lord, okay. Okay, good. So there in the upper room. And the Bible gives us a list of names in verse 13. All the apostolic leaders, we spoke about that a little bit last week. And. There's a name there, I want to ask a question. I mean, the name is Simon Zelote, so Simon is Zilah. Anybody wants to tell me what you know about the Zilahs? Anyone wants to tell me what you know about Zilahs? We're supposed to have bright people on this platform. Okay, I'm waiting, Zilahs, Zilahs, all right. So the Zilahs, seeing that no one is willing to respond, Zilahs, who people are going to call assassins. Like, you know, like, oh, you have groups there like ISIS and these terrorist groups. These Jewish people. Who made covenants that anywhere they meet a Roman soldier. They used to walk with daggers in their waist. They would look very well put together, you know, respectable, but they were killers, right? And when they would meet Roman soldiers, because they couldn't deal with the oppression. Of Romans, the Romans who bought their lives, so they would just meet a Roman soldier, you know, of God, and they're. They would just wrestle dagger in his back. And leave him there for dead, and then just run. So they wouldn't say, come like, they would, you would see them with a big long sword. The orders move in a very covert kind of way, you know, and, but they were deadly. And one of the most powerful testimonies of Jesus' ministry. And I'm sure these things help us and enlighten us. Is that you will see Matthew, look at Matthew, you see Matthew's name is Jettu. Matthew, the writer of the Gospel of Matthew. Before he became the writer of the Book of Matthew, it's in Matthew. His original Bible name was Levi. You see, you'll meet him in Gospel of Matthew chapter 2. Levi was a publican. And because the publicans worked as public servants, that's where the word publican came from. They were public servants or customs officers, collecting taxes for the Roman government. And they worked for commission. The more taxes they collected, they had a standard monthly salary. And they would also get, you know, based on how much taxes they collect. What they used to do, most of us know, they would sometimes use a lot of extortion. And a lot of manipulation, and they would get sometimes. Instead of, let's say, maybe like charging a 10%, 15% VAT. On whatever things, items, they would charge sometimes a 20%. And the people could not retaliate, because they always had Roman soldiers protecting them. They had that kind of security system in place, going over the Roman government. So they would take that 5% for themselves, pocket that. And then they would still get their pay, so they were always very rich people. But whenever Zilahs met Romans, Roman soldiers. Whenever a Zilah meets a publican, that publican, if he didn't have the kind of security system around him, he was a dead man. Because what the Jews felt is that the publicans were Jews. Who pledged their allegiance to support the Roman government, it was almost like they were betrayers. You know, supporting an evil Roman oppressive system against the very own people. So one of the miraculous signs of Jesus' ministry is Jesus' ability. To bring people of different kinds of persuasions and different kinds of background. And bring them into a unity that is powerful. So for, when you see this upper room, you know, you'll come to that in a little bit. You recognize, you know, when the Deap Pentecost came. When it was fast shock a little bit, in chapter 20, the Deap Pentecost came. And people often wonder, you know, Jesus was ascended after 40 days. And after 40 days. And after forty days, Pentecost came on the fifty day day. So I want someone to ask me, answer me. How many days between the ascension and the day of Pentecost in Acts chapter two? Anybody wants to answer that? Hello? Hello? How many days between the ascension, which was forty days?
Fifty days.
And Pentecost, which is fifty fifty days after. So Jesus Christ spent forty days showing himself by many infallible proofs. Okay? And then fifty days after he walked on the cross after Passover is Pentecost. So we have forty days Jesus spent on the zoot. And then Pentecost came on the fifty day day after, you know, uh Jesus is walking across to Passover. Jesus Christ rose again, spent forty days, and then Pentecost came on the fifty day day. What's the difference here? How many? Anyone tell me?
Ten days, ten days.
Beautiful, beautiful, ten days. And most times when we talk about, you know, the Holy Ghost coming. You know, we doing biblical exegesis to understand the dynamics of what is happening here. The God we serve, the moment Jesus ascended, Pentecost could have come that same day. And he would have gotten the baptism and speak in tongues same day. But in the wisdom of God, and I'm sharing this to help us, with all of us as the people of God. What do they have to happen? Do you know ten days God had to process them? One, Matthew was somebody that was hated and despised by his very own brethren. Simon Zilah was a killer, a murderer, amen. He belonged to a special group, terrorist group. So I'm doing some I see Jesus now. It doesn't stay there in scripture. I see Jesus is reading and did it text. So it is possible now, you know, ten days, why they waiting there? James and John, boy, those guys wanted power and prestige. You know, some folks may have gone to them and say, here, boy, all this something else, you know, boy. Or they or they just come lately after us and they want to get big position, you know. So whatever issues that are ironed out, so maybe Simon is here, and I've gone to Matthew and said, boy, I want to tell you, you know, I I know, it's like, I forgive you, boy. You know, it's like, you know, and I want you to know, please, you know, please forgive me too, because there are times I really wanted to really kill you, boy. You know, because you like, you used to exploit your own people, boy, for the Romans. And then I believe that all the men would have had to go to the ladies. Because the men always looked on the ladies in the Jewish culture. They would have had to go to Mary, the mother of Jesus, and all the other ladies here, and Salome and whatnot. And let these ladies know, look, ladies, you know, we really sorry. You maybe looked at you all and put you all down. So sometimes, you know, we miss those elements. We just see ten as a, okay, it was ten days he waited in that room. But they were not just sitting on chairs, looking at each other, one another in that room. No. Jesus knew that they had to be processed. And sometimes we need to get these things clear. You know, when some people have to get, you know, the baptism, the Holy Spirit, there's some of their things that are in our lives that God has to remove, whether it's bitterness, unforgiveness, different issues we may have that we have to deal with, ones that is taken care of, the Spirit of God, through the Holy Spirit. Amen. Yes, he's, you know, you have many ghosts in the world, but there's only one ghost that is holy. And that's the Holy Ghost. So if he has to come and tell us, you know, he wants to make sure that our lives are confirmed so that the ten days and you know, you may be in Koki Church or Samuel Reconciliation Center. You believe in God, for the Holy Spirit. And the Lord must say, the Holy Ghost is available to you tonight. However, if there are things in our lives that are not present to God, God wants to remove those things. And I want to give us a look at teaching tonight. You know, as we we look at the upper room, they were in one place in one accord. Verse fourteen says, these all continued with one accord in what? In prayer and supplication. Look at verse fourteen, with the woman. You see the importance, see the emphasis here, with the woman. You have to understand, between exegesis, in the in the normal operations of things, the woman could not be there with the man in the temple. There was a special place, the court for the woman. That's where Jesus used to spend most of his time when he goes to the temple. The court of the woman and then outside in the outer yard, like here, um Koki's car park is, that was called the Court of the Gentiles. And that is why Jesus had to overthrow the money changers. Because what the high priests felt, they said, look, we didn't care too much about them Gentiles. So the Jews had a place inside the temple. There's a special place for the woman, but outside where the big court is, the courtyard of the car park. That's where he proselyted, like Cornelius and many other Gentiles. They would come to services, but when they would come there, they had no place. So they had to sit on the main road. When Jesus saw that it affected him, because they were discriminating against Gentiles, as we spoke again just now. They were telling Jesus, well, they were giving historic kingdom to Israel. Because they were just thinking, they were only thinking about themselves. And one of the biggest sins affecting believers today is that we could be very selfish, you know, with what, you know, we, God has blessed us with, you know, um. Um, hallelujah, praise the Lord. Hallelujah, hallelujah, glory to God, you know, and um we can't go for that soup. So I want to encourage the men on this platform, if you want to see a church powerful. Start encouraging the ladies, women of the church to rise up to 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 what God has for them. Because once you keep, any church that keeps their women down could never be a dynamic church. Once the women are being sidelined and marginalized and pushing on corner. Maybe the most they can do is have a wow group, a women's group, or maybe teach a little son a school of pray. Whoa, we in serious trouble. So hallelujah. So we seen here, these all speaking about the apostolate leaders. They continued with what? One accord in prayer. What does that word prayer mean? Unsupplication, we said, spoke about it last week. That word is prosuke. Pros is a preposition that means before. And uk is face. So prayer means coming face to face with God. In other words, you're coming to have a face to face encounter with God. And when you have a face to face encounter with God, God is no respectable person. What he does, he enters his presence with worship and praise and thanksgiving. What happens? He reveals himself. What he does, when he reveals himself, he shows us our shortcomings. And that is what caused him to become in one accord, because you you have to understand the dynamics of the word prayer, prosuke in the worship, adoration, but it also involves a confession, confession, which is the word homo logeu. It means to speak the same thing after. So as we begins to, we begin to spend time in God's presence. The longer we spend time in God's presence, he doesn't show us nothing about, you know, the sister and brother and children. The Spirit of God shows us who we are. And then he would tell us, I wanted to fix this. And he said, okay, Lord, I'm sorry. Then he shows us something else. Hallelujah. So as this, the word, the word, um, the word supplication is a different thing now. It is deces, okay? You know, uh intercession is intuces. Supplication is deces, D W S I S. Prosuke is P R O S E U C H A, prosuke. So what happens now is that they will be asking God, Lord, give me the strength to go and talk to that brother. Lord, I need to go and talk to James and John. I will vex with them, you know, God. You know, Lord, you know, Jesus about to go back to heaven. And they come with their mother, come out to pull run, they want to be on right side and left side. They want big position in Koki Church, and they just come and 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 God, God, you know, I hear longer than them. So all that is she's written, you think, you know, my God. If your church doesn't have no kind of problem, ask God to transfer to somewhere that kind of church. Because church is one of the people is problems. And the bigger the church, the more problems. So enjoy the ride. Somebody say praise the Lord to that, hallelujah. So all these folks in the upper room, before the Holy Ghost came, don't feel for a moment, because they're sort of ideal people. They had all the imperfections, all the attitudes, all kinds of breakdown in relationships. And the Bible is very emphatic, when they were in one place, in one accord. Somebody say praise the Lord to that, no man, one place. So then we had the the
Praise God.
Yeah, amen. One place. They had to be in one place that they couldn't tell the ladies, or they didn't belong here, or this visa go across. So under Jewish law, or they can't come here by the main, main. And we said last week, when when Jewish men perform what's called the Bar Mitzvah at the age of twelve, Jesus performed that. That is where they will give them the tallit, what we call the pressure, all they put out on them, they robe them. And that gives those, that gave those men responsibility from the age of twelve. A Jewish boy became a man, and he was accountable to God to come to the temple three times a year. See that in due to me sixteen sixteen. And he can't come empty handed. He has to come bringing an offering from the age of twelve. And you know what Jewish men, he says, do? He said, thank God, they were not born a Gentile. And secondly, ladies, don't listen to hear this one, block ears. This is thank God I wasn't born a woman. I saw bad Jewish men have it. You couldn't walk in the temple with your wife, you know, like in today's standards, you know. You walk in front as the boss, the wife has to be behind with the children. But Jesus was breaking through that. The Holy Ghost was dismantling all these demonic systems. Amen. And that's why I often tell people, you can't shut down Christmas. I hear some ministers, you shut down Christmas. Because the blood of Christ, you know, coming at Jesus. One of the purposes of Jesus's coming, for those who may have never heard this before. One was to redeem sinful man. Hallelujah. But another purpose of Jesus coming, for those of us who never heard this, was that to restore women back to the rightful place in God's divine order and creation. Somebody say praise the Lord. That is why we have Pentecost, amen. Somebody say amen to that, no man, my God. Yes, somebody sent you man to destroy, forced John tree. He came to destroy the works of the devil, yes. Praise the Lord. So it's like all that is destroying the works of the devil. Who, because by marginalizing and keeping women in the background as if they were lower class of society. That is Satan's plan to keep women subdued and in a corner. I get me. But maybe just to be like, just a Sunday school teacher or something. No. Amen. Women can be preachers, ministers, apostles, prophets, evangelists. I get me. Amen. Miracle workers, performing signs and wonders. Get somebody say amen to that. Oh, my goodness, praise the Lord, Jesus. Amen. Are you receiving this this evening?
Amen.
Amen.
Praise the Lord. And as we look at these women, we said Mary was there, we spoke about her last week. That is very instructive, because of all the people that were there. Mary, as the mother of Jesus, God allowed Mary to be preserved. You know, history tells us, you know, that at that time, you will recognize the name Joseph isn't here. That Joseph may have gone home to be the Lord already. And when Jesus was on the cross, he told John, behold thy mother. And and then he told his mother, you know, to take take John as a son. And from that time on, the Bible tells us that John took Mary into his home and adopted her as his mother. Praise the Lord. Hallelujah. Amen. But Mary is the only person who could have borne witness to the coming of the Holy Spirit. She could not be deceived. Because the moment she says, be it unto me, according to thy word. She was con- she she conception took place when Gabriel came to her. And when she went to the home of Elizabeth in her country. I mean, Mary wasn't even showing, because she was, I mean, she was like day one. Her belly was still normal. There's no projection. Elizabeth was six months with Johnny Baptist. And as they they connected with each other, you know your Bible, the Gospel of Luke, chapter two. The Bible says Johnny Baptist slept in her womb. Something happened in Mary's womb, something happened in Elizabeth's womb. And I want to challenge people out there in Koki Open Bible and Samuel Reconciliation. You know, God in this new season wants us to connect with people who can make something leap inside of you. So much shame, man. You need to connect with people when you talk with them and you share with them. You know, the passion they have for the things of God, something should rise up inside of you. Hallelujah, praise the Lord, my Lord. You know, so that uh Mary was the only person when that Holy Ghost came. Because Mary was a carrier of the glory of God. I love that. You know, when I dealt, I dealt in a situation, we sitting with a mighty lady of God in this nation. Who's, I mean, I tell you, boys, some people challenging about being in ministry. And I went on a platform and I spoke from Genesis to Revelation about how God uses women, hallelujah. When I reached by Mary, my God, some of them started to jump, because some of them came out of strong Roman Catholic background. You know, I said, you know, I said, Romanism has put Mary on the godhead, but it is not scriptural. But God placed Mary in that upper room to be to be the one to confirm, no kind of contrary spirit. If even if the devil wanted to come and something come to feed him, brother, he couldn't come to you because Mary, hallelujah. Oh, my God. And if if God can use a woman to be the carrier, to carry God in her belly for nine months. I want to tell women on this platform, there's nothing that God can't use you to fulfill and accomplish in this life. Somebody say praise the Lord to that. Give my amen, Amma.
Amen.
Amen, praise the Lord.
Amen to that.
Yes, amen.
Amen, amen.
Amen. And in the in the in the in the uh from verses fifteen to twenty-six, the Bible tells us that they needed to have someone to replace Judas. And as you read this passage, I've I've sent you information for you, very clear, notes that you could follow through. And not everything will go word for word, because I don't just be here, you know, uh for the next four or five months just on the Book of Acts. We have plenty of things to do. So do a reading and you will see they brought forward two people. And these two people were uh Matthias, amen. And the Bible tells us a cast lots. One man's name was Matthias. What was the name of the other man? Could somebody tell me? Matthias and who else?
Joseph.
Paul.
Paul, also known as Paul.
In 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 Acts chapter one, two men were brought for them to have a vote.
Joseph called Bathibas.
Okay. Was it?
Joseph, he was called Bathibas, so named justice.
Okay. And who else again? Matthias?
Matthias, yeah.
Who's it? That's a Christiana, Christiana A plus, give me your great student and your word, man, praise the Lord. So yes, and you recognize something that I need to clarify, and then I'll come back to Pentecost. Um before the coming of the Holy Spirit. You know, a Bible, a biblical tradition was that to determine sometimes a choice to be made in a certain matter. They would actually use um lots. We see it, we see the idea too, also in shrine within the uh Old Testament, when the high priest, high priests are breastplate. And the breastplate had something like a, it was like a pillowcase. To the front, you had the twelve stones, but in there's a sack, like where you put the pillows and the case. So the breastplate would be strapped on the priest's chest here. And when he, and and the twelve stones, and whenever he came before God, to stand before God in prayer. These twelve stones represented the twelve tribes of Israel. And regardless of the idiosyncrasies and shortcomings, when he stood there, you know, he had to represent everybody, has the power of intercession. And intercession, you do not discriminate against anybody. And intercession, you do not discriminate against anybody. So these twelve tribes, they had all kinds of different problems. The priests would stand before God and intercede. And he had it on his chest, on his heart here. And then if they wanted to have the mind of God in a certain matter, there are two stones, a red and a white stone, in some cases a black and a white. It's called urine and thumin, one is called light, one is called revelation, light and revelation. So the priests would pray and ask God, God of Abraham, Isaac and Jacob, what should we do? And if, like even David wanted to go and fight, the priest wouldn't look into the sack, he'd just put his hands. And based on whichever stone come out, it would be yes or no, you know. This, that's the answer from God. God used that as a, as a form, you know, to, to make a decision. In the Bible, early Bible times, but after the coming of the Holy Spirit, you know, there was no more casting of the lots. And must I dare say that, you know, uh, and I, I share this respectfully for many churches today. That may not understand the dynamics of the Book of Acts. Do you know in many churches today, I don't want you to shout amen to that. You know, many churches today, when we have things like proven leaders, we have uh, strategies we have developed. You know, because of our whole democratic outlook to life, that sometimes in our church. There may be somebody that does not qualify to serve on a church board. But if that person has a measure of influence and charisma, their people will say, I want that person on the board. They will nominate that person. And when the time comes for voting, something almost similar like casting lots. That person will get a popular vote and they may be on that board and they giving our pastor thunder. In some cases, some pastors get man, they get pressure, you know, from that person because that person was not God ordained because that was not a Holy Ghost inspired appointment. It was manmade in the sense that the person got a popular vote based on the influence. And that has affected many churches over the years, you know, and I, I talking from years of experience as a pastor as well. And what is so important, and many pastors today, you know, what they do, okay, is that um, what, what some pastors do today, and some I know personally, they spend time in prayer, they get in mind of God. It comes like a board of elders. A, a, a board of elders is a, a, a board that's supposed to be appointed by the pastor. And so once you have divine order, a pastor, no senior people, mature people, solid people, living upright morally, spiritually, a praying people. And you meet together in a time of prayer, and you can look through your church, that's like Koki. You have three hundred people in Koki and with the, with the mind of God. This is what they did in Acts thirteen. They didn't call for a vote, they spent time now, the Holy Ghost had already come in Acts two. And the Lord says, separate me, Paul, separate me, Barnabas, what do you have to do? This is all the church supposedly, but unfortunately, you know, e- even though we talk in tongues and all these things, we do sometimes have the confidence. That God lead a man of God with the leadership of the church, the eldership, to select people from that church. Who are fit to serve as board members. So we have to always be having these forms going out. And then people do the campaigning and whatnot. I wanted a servant who, I, I put it up in here, man. That is all in many open Bible circles, people get on board, people campaign. And they get on boards and they get a popular vote. And brother, it is very unfortunate, but this is not how it's supposed to be. I hope you do not get vexed with me. Amen. But we see that here, we, after the cast lots, you recognize what happened. And I, I'm, I'm not saying this to prolong Matthias, but if you look through the whole of the Book of Acts. You'll see nothing about Matthias because Matthias got a popular vote, amen. We saw nothing. He must have done something for the Lord. But brethren, truly and truly, you know, a lot of decisions we have to make in our churches. We supposed to spend more time in prayer to get in mind of God, to know. You know, uh, simple things as who to bring in a purport to preach and all these different things. You need to have in mind of the Lord, who to, to lead in worship for certain kinds of services. You need to have the mind of God, amen. All right. So I want to touch you a bit about Pentecost. We spoke a while ago that Jesus Christ showed himself by many infallible proofs. Visual proof, verbal proof, you know, time proof. Amen. So he spoke. Then he, he, he spent time with them, I get me, and and then when Pentecost came in Acts two, we go in there now, you'll see. And when the day of Pentecost was fully come again, so ten days, they are still how? In one place, you see that in the Bible, they were all in one accord in one place. So do you know ten days God processed them, brethren? As many of us in open Bible churches, we have had altar calls to people to receive the Holy Spirit and nothing happens. Simply because there's sometimes this unity and there's no oneness, you know, in our churches. And as we said, you know, the Holy Spirit belongs to unity, you know, the Trinity is a unity. So if he sees dysfunction and disunity, he can't really move. So sometimes we had to, we had to put people through all kinds of rigors and and we, we, and tell them all kinds of things and, and, and spin them around three times. And tell them, say, hallelujah, 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 you know, and all kinds of rituals and those things are not really scriptural. You know, the Holy Spirit is a perfect gentleman, you know, in, so to speak, you know, so. Sometimes when we think in terms of how the Holy Spirit operates, you know, different from some, somebody strategies you try to you know, in Calcatan using all churches today, and some people still do not get the Holy Spirit. Somebody may, if we're not careful, it may end up getting some kind of familiar spirit. All right. So somebody said to me, there's a brilliant person, between the ascension and Pentecost was ten days. What we need to know, for those who may be taking notes, if you can't take notes, let, let me know, I'll send you notes to you. But the, the, the ten days between uh, the ascension of Jesus and Pentecost, we said those ten days. It was a case of God processing them, bringing them into one heart, one unity. All right. And the Bible is a book of numbers. For that matter, there's a book called Numbers in the Bible. And we mustn't take numbers, you know, Satan has done a lot of pervasive things with numbers, in, 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 in the field of gambling. You know, he uses a lot of divine numbers, seven being a good example, right? And for those of us who know anything about gambling, right? And ten is a very significant number in scripture. And I, I'm not a chapas, a chapas on the platform, but I see the time is already seventy. So I may have to probably just, um, just share this on the number ten. For those who want to take notes, I'm going to share this with you because this is very instructing. All right. The number ten. You need to know what God is saying because sometimes we have dreams, we have visions, and sometimes God gives us numbers in our dreams. The number ten is used two hundred and forty-three times in scripture. And then you would, you would, you would tent. You know, as I've been, you would ten is mentioned seventy-nine times. And here's what you know, the number, number ten, what it means, the significance of the number ten, you need to know these things. It means authority, holiness, harmony, law. As the ten commandments, it speaks of responsibility, it speaks of completeness of order. It speaks of the, the fulfillment of the divine purpose and destiny. And ten also speaks of unity. And you need to also understand that Jewish rabbis in the Old Testament period considered and regarded ten as a number that speaks of holiness. You know, something holy enough that it becomes a resting place for God's presence and his glory. And sometimes people may not recognize these things. Who wants to tell me how many fingers you have and how many toes you have? Talk to me quickly, anybody?
Ten.
Ten.
Beautiful. There's not a coincidence because our lives are supposed to become a resting place for God's presence and God's glory. We're supposed to be carriers of God's glory. This is why God enshrined within our human bodies, the number ten. I get me, ten fingers, ten toes, amen. Amen. And it is one of the most dynamic numbers in scripture. Let me give you some, some biblical numerics. Nine plus one is ten, eight plus two is ten, seven plus three is ten. I get me, six plus, plus four is ten. Not so, let me see those new marks. And then five plus five is what? Ten.
Ten.
Wh- wh- when you, and to show how dynamism, nine is the number of fruitfulness, one is the number of unity. Nine plus one is ten. Eight is the number of what? New beginnings. Two is also symbolic of unity, as in the case of marriage. When two people, for those who are married in platform, when two get married, what God says, two become one. You see that Genesis, Genesis five and two, and God called the man and the woman Adam. You know, many, many ladies, I hope don't get vexed with me ladies, many ladies, when you see they get married. Based on what their name supposed to be, their maiden name, they stick their maiden name between the husband's name. So it's like they stick any maiden name and the new name from the husband. And really, truly that, that disrupts the unity that God expects in a marriage. When you get married to a husband. Rep, uh, Genesis five and two, God called a man and a woman, two becoming one. He didn't call him Eve Adam, call him Adam. Is that amen? So don't get vexed with parcel like this. So eight is new beginnings. Two is unity, seven is perfection, three is divinity. Somebody shame me. Six is the number of man, four is the number of the earth. Somebody shame me. Five is grace. So you have grace, grace. So all the numbers, when you add them, five and five, six and four. Four is the number of the earth. You have four cardinal points, you have four seasons, spring, summer, autumn, winter. Four is the number of the earth, six is the number of man. Somebody shame me. So when you think in terms, this number is a dynamic number. And ten symbolizes a man, listen to this, the number ten symbolizes a man on the earth. Six plus four, six is the number of man, four is the number of earth. So this is one of the meanings of the number ten, a man on the earth who must abide by God's law. Because ten is the number of law, as in the ten commandments. In order to work in dominion and authority, based on Genesis one twenty-six, have dominion. Experience a new beginning through redemption and so fulfill what? His eternal purpose and destiny for which God created him. This is how God sees number ten. That's why you have ten in shrine within a very big, ten fingers, ten toes. And anytime you go through a problem and you want to give up, look at your ten toes. If the devil strips you naked like Job, when you look at the ten toes and the ten fingers, you're a child of divine purpose. I get me, redeemed by God's grace. Somebody say amen. And you have a divine purpose. As I said, ten speaks of what? Completeness. Ten speaks of the fulfillment of divine purpose and destiny. I get me, some people mix up ten with seven. Seven is perfection because three represents divinity. And four is the number of the earth. So four and three is heaven and earth coming together to make the number seven, which is perfection. But ten is completeness, fulfillment of divine purpose and destiny. So when, when it go through the Bible. I'm not sure if Dr. Jackson will give me five minutes. I want to go do something quickly with the number ten.
Good.
I have a five minutes, okay, praise the Lord. So if you start in Genesis, you will see God said in Genesis one ten times. You see Exodus, there were ten commandments as well as ten plagues. I get me, and many instances in scripture, the Passover lamb was selected on the tenth day of the first month. The day of atonement is only ten days, seven months. I get me. I'm touching this one, I don't want to get vexed, but Titan is ten percent. Somebody talk. Amen. That is not by chance, you know. What we need to know is that in the context of Titan, the number is Isa, E S E R. And it is connecting in the Hebrew to a word, O S H E R. Hear me, brethren, don't get vexed with me. Amen. Dr. Jackson and them teachers, I share them in my heart, amen. O S H E R, connected to E S E R, which is ten, is the word wealth. And that is why in Malagasy and ten, when you honor God by giving the tights, God guarantees you, he will open you windows of heaven. And you'll bring, I mean, not just what financial wealth, he will bring, you know, uh, material wealth. He will bring, I mean, academic wealth, business wealth, I mean, financial, your physical health, you know, I mean, blessings for you and your children. And then he will bless your church. Oh my God. So wealth, all dimensions of wealth, amen. And uh, that's another teaching myself, but Luke eleven and forty-two and Matthew twenty-three and twenty-three. Those are two scriptures, they often say, you know, the New Testament doesn't address that, but Jesus in his wisdom. New Titan was a normal thing. And he alluded to that, he told you. New Testament believers, he said, many of you have denied fundamental things of, you know, your Christian, I bet is to demonstrate love and mercy and compassion and grace, but you're paying your tights, or you're giving your tights. And Jesus said that more than once, he says, you should honor God by giving the tights. But you have already, you have also what? In the process of honoring the tights, I am also concerned about showing love and mercy and compassion to others. So he didn't just, he didn't actually say, well, disapprove of Titan, Jesus approved Titan. So even though some people say that the New Testament doesn't address that, Jesus addressed that. It comes like tongues, he didn't have to make a doctrine out of it. He called the underside Titan as a principle that God uses in order to bring wealth back to his people. So ten is, you see ten. Is, 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 is the number given for Titan. My God. We also seen Genesis twenty-four, those of us who know the story of Rebecca and Abraham seven. She asked you ten days before she made up her mind to go to him. In route four, the Bible tells us Boaz, when he wanted to um, confirm his marriage to, 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 to Ruth. He brought ten elders. I wish today churches, young people could do that, rather than just go and meet people and, and print invitations and come and tell the pastor they want counseling. And then sometimes he, he passes to provide a counselor for them. Before Boaz, I said, Boaz is a big man, he's not no youth like me. Boaz is a big man, Boaz, Boaz said, yeah, what? He get ten elders, ten, can endorse the same for their approval before he even marry Ruth. But Dr. Jackson, I pray that our young people do the same, to come to you and the elders before they start settling on making plans to get married. The Bible tells us, in the book of John, Jesus makes I am statements ten times. When Daniels, uh, Babas has avoided the food in Babylon. You know, offered idols, he was ten times better than anybody else in the whole of Babylon. Amen. Jesus healed ten lepers, my God. And when Jesus taught his parables, he spoke about ten virgins in Matthew twenty-five. He spoke about ten talents. And in Luke fifteen, when he spoke about the different aspects of salvation. He spoke about the woman who had ten pieces of silver, my God. And in the book of Revelation, as we close this study tonight. We know when it title with Daniel chapter two, Nebuchadnezzar dream and the final world empire. I get me, you see ten toes, I get me, a ten toe kingdom. For those who know the book of Daniel. And then in the book of Revelation, what we see there is that the Antichrist is portrayed as a, as a creature with ten horns, amen. So that all through the Bible. You see that number ten, Pentecost. Is ten days after the ascension. So we need to understand the importance of numbers. Don't take numbers lightly, amen. So I think my time is already gone, but I don't know, Rajon, we studied, there's so much, you know, to talk about, but uh, what we, what we observed in Acts chapter one. We saw firstly, and we see the disciples communing with the living Lord, we see that in the notes, Acts one, one to eight. We see them watching the ascending Lord in verses nine to ten. We see them expecting the returning Lord. And we see them in verses twelve to twenty-six, they waiting on the empowering Lord. When it comes to two next week, we will look at, um. It's a beautiful study we're going to have next week. If we have time to cover it all, we're going to look at the day of Pentecost. And there's a song we normally sing, I came with the expectation, teach all at any, in Acts two twenty-two. I want you to exegete that, when Peter preached on the day of Pentecost, say, amen of Israel, hear these words. Jesus of Nazareth, a man approved of God among you in miracles, wonders and signs, hallelujah. Which God did by him in the midst of you, as you yourself also know. Miracles, signs and wonders, we're going to be coming, believing, going next week. Amen. If we have some time, I will try to go through this quickly. So we'll have a time of prayer for God to pour some miracles, signs and wonders. And if you may notice already, but for those who may not know, each one has a different meaning. We're going to do the Greek exegesis of some of these terms and see the beauty. And it, and I mean, it's, it's, I can't prepare for all that this evening, but the time flies so quick. And it, and I mean, it's, it's, I can't prepare for all that this evening, but the time flies so quickly. I, oh my goodness. I felt that seeing a few online, Dr. Jackson, and we could have gone till nine o'clock, but I won't be fierce, over to you, Dr. Jackson. If we were in church, you know, in church, you know, people have to get home and get transformed, you know what? You know, I can't prepare to finish the whole of chapter two, but God is a good God, is you, I trust you learn something tonight.
Amen, thank you pastor, and thank you Rev, you know, again, as you shared. Acts one, one to eight, communing with the living Lord. Verses nine to ten, watching the ascending Lord, verse three, expecting the returning Lord. And, and then the fourth part, waiting on the empowering Lord for verses twelve to twenty-six. You know, we thank God for his word, all right, and what has been shared tonight. And we look forward to chapter two next week, please God. I just would like to let everyone know that the handout, I'm reading from one of the handouts, all right, that has this bit of outline. All right, the handout for next week's study is available at the church office, amen. So we will give you, um, those who come to church on Sunday, you can collect it from the ushers. Or if you are available and you're just driving past the church during the, the working hours, you can just pop in and the, the, the staff at the office will give you next week's handout one time, amen. So we just want to, to, want to say thanks to everyone for coming. Remember also when you're coming in, when you're logging on, I want to thank everybody for coming tonight, we had quite a few people here tonight, let me give God praise. So we want to also say thank you for coming and ask that next week when you're coming on, you can either put your name or the name of your church, amen, so that we can identify and recognize who you are. So God bless you, we really thank God for you, and we thank God for you coming to, so you can learn the word of God. At this time, we just want to, to close in prayer. We thank God for Reverend Alexis making himself available, you know, to teach us the word of God at the level and depth that he's been sharing, and we thank God for him. So let's pray, Father, we thank you for the opportunity to sit in your presence and hear your word, to study your word. We thank you, Lord Jesus, Father, the entrance of your word, give it light, and the entrance of your word, give it life. Father, we thank you that the light of your word gives life to us. And Lord Jesus, we position ourselves, Lord, to get this light and to get this life. And Father, by the power of your Holy Spirit, we pray right now that the word that you promised us, Lord, the word that you have designed for us, Lord, the purpose that you have outlined for us, that we are able to walk in it, Lord. But as we learn your word, oh Father, Lord, quicken us to walk in purpose for your honor and for your glory. In Jesus' name, amen. I just want to also recognize Reverend Pereira and any of the other ministers who may be from Bible and otherwise, who will be on with us tonight. God bless you, and to every one of the believers who joined us tonight, may God bless you. And so we want to just tell you, you're dismissed, you are dismissed. So God bless, have a wonderful night, and we see you next week, please God, at thirty PM, same time.